Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Borough Council, I would like to welcome you here tonight. And I think the first thing I'm going to do is introduce the members of Borough Council that are here. So we have Vice President Rich Gerard, Council Member Michelle Crusher, Council Member Larry Burns. And then, of course, we have our wonderful administrative staff, Manager Jamie Snyder, and Vice Manager Katie Blahos. And not to be forgotten is our Director of Public Works, Steve Thicke. We also have our Borough Engineer Chad Camber. So on behalf of Borough Council, I want to welcome you here. And why do we have these meetings? Why do we have town halls, send out surveys? Two weeks ago, we had an open house in conjunction with Montgomery County Planning Commission. And I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to go to that. I know the Moores have. That was so exciting. The amount of energy and ideas in that room was really, really heartening for me. I was very excited about that. So the purpose of having these are so you can know what's on council's mind, and we can hear from you also. It's only in coming together like this that we'll know what each person wants, what each person expects. So I will just say, do not hesitate to ask questions. We welcome questions and we encourage questions. So don't be afraid, don't be afraid to speak up there. So I'll turn this over to Manager Snyder. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Public Works Steve Thicke.
We switched it up this time. I should have told you. We just did it today.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to disappoint by not being Manager Snyder. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start everything off tonight. We're going to just go over the quick agenda of what we're planning on doing and highlighting this evening. I'm going to start everything off with the 20. Am I talking too loud?
No.
Okay, just making sure. I'm going to start off with the 2025 Projects Overview, including the Broad Street and North Main Street Utility Replacement Projects, kind of a recap of where we are today, what's left over. I'm going to speak about the Joint Mill and Overlay Project that we're doing this year. And then Borough Manager Snyder will come up and speak about the 2025 Financial Overview, including budget highlights, borrowing and debt service, the PJM auction and the impact on the electric rates, ordinance updates, communication and events that we have going on throughout this year. And then from there, we're going to turn it over to the Engineer Chad Camber to speak about the Heather Meadows Pond, which I'm sure nobody's here for. So the 2025 Projects Overview, the Broad Street and North Main Street Utility Replacement Project, I'm sure everybody's noticed this project is underway. Not sure if you've noticed or not. So so far to date, this is just a little map of the affected areas. The contractor has replaced about 2,700 linear feet of storm sewer pipe on West Broad Street and about 22 structures, including manholes and inlets. North Main Street, it's been 55 linear feet of storm sewer pipe and two structures, two inlets, 130 linear feet of sanitary sewer pipe and nine manholes. And on East Broad Street, they're not quite at 1,200 linear feet of storm sewer pipe. They still have about 35 feet to go. And this week was supposed to be the final for them, but this rain kind of pushed them back a little bit. And they've also done 10 structures to date, one is remaining. So they're moving along nicely. West Broad Street's in the process of having all the final paving done, waiting on, once again, the weather to break. Once that's complete, they'll be moving over to North Main Street to finish everything over there, and then East Broad to follow that. Moving, this is for the grants. So with the support from Representative Malagary and Senator Collette, Hatfield Borough was able to obtain close to $1.9 million in grant funds for these projects, which is very substantial. As of today, this is a different types of, and I don't want to say different types of grants, but it's different than what we're used to in the past. We've already collected about $300,000 worth of those grant funds back. A lot of times, we have to wait until the entire project is complete to start collecting grant funds. This, we've been able to start collecting them as the project's been in progress, which has been helping our debt payment services a lot. I'm not going to get into all the nitty gritty about this because I know this is what you're really here for, not the pond. And then something new this year is the joint paving project. This year, we're teaming up with Hatfield Township. Since we only share a border with them, we found it very cost effective to team up with them to put one project out to bid for all the road paving throughout Hatfield Township and Hatfield Borough. We get one contractor because of the extra quantities that we're adding. We get a lower price from the contractor. So this year, the total contract cost for all the paving was $655,000. Hatfield Borough's portion is only about $85,000 worth of that. So if we were to have gone out on our own, it would have been fairly decent amount more than that. So we actually got very good numbers this year by doing this joint project. So does anybody have any questions about anything that I presented? Sorry if I rushed through it a little fast.
See, timeline on the paving.
For North Main Street, we have it anticipated to the contract start date would be in July, finishing by September. Currently, we're waiting on the, our contractor who did the sanitary sewer replacement, they need to do their restoration work before our contractor can come in and do the final paving. So we're expecting, I would say, late summer to be realistic for the final, final paving.
About to include 40-foot road?
No, so 40-foot road is going to be covered under the Utility Replacement Project. That's going to be full overlay basically from Main Street out to Little Pass Circo Rubber because of all the trench restorations that would have to be done.
By when?
If we ever see the sun again, I would say sooner than later.
And then I'll add a big portion of that's being paid by North Side Water Authority.
Is that going to stop at the rubber plant?
It's going to stop a little bit past that, yes.
Because the noise the trucks make are a little bit further down than that.
Which, which direction, sir?
Looking towards Hatfield Borough.
Okay, so going in towards like Columbia Ave and Wayne Avenue. So all of that will be full width mill and overlay, meaning all the trenches that the trucks are hitting, all of that will be milled down and will be one continuous paved job. So that.
By when?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm hoping first week in June. Don't hold me to that. Okay. Maybe I'll tell you first week in July, so I cover my book.
That's spring, not the end of summer.
Okay.
Much better.
All right. Any other questions? Come on. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Manager Snyder. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So tonight, I'll just briefly talk about a 2025 Financial Overview to start off. Many of you probably seen a lot of these documents in our Spring Informer. If you receive that, take a look at it. Some of the stuff we'll be talking about in my portion will look very familiar to you. So starting out with the 2025 Budget Highlights, what you need to know, as I said, this was located in the Spring Informer. Hatfield Borough Council in December of 2024 passed an $11 million operating budget for Hatfield Borough. Some of the expenses include debt service payments, police service and debt at $1,095. Our police contract services are $1,045 for the year 2025. We're also paying an extra $50,000 for pension services and contributing to the new Hatfield Police Station as we contract with the Hatfield Police Department for Hatfield Township and Hatfield Borough Services. So we will be financially contributing a small portion to the building of the new police service. Power purchase went up to $2.2 million. I'll get into some details a little bit later about that. Some miscellaneous expenses throughout the budget increased an average of 2.5%. Roughly, the budget increases three to three and a half every year, so 2.5. Okay, increases. It wasn't as expensive as we've seen in the past, but again, we had some major expenses with power purchases and some debt service that went up. Revenues, we increased bringing in an additional $55,000 in EIC and LST funding. Hatfield Borough did have a tax increase, so it brought an additional $139 for real estate taxes. Electric rates, we're looking at an additional $319,000. We did a sewer EDU audit, which would generate an additional $180 for us, and we enacted a new rental inspection program, which I'll get into a little bit more detail later this evening for an additional $60,000 of income for us. As Steve highlighted, River Resourcing Project, we had budgeted $100,400 and actually came in under budget at $84,000. So we'll see some savings in the budget this year for that with our partnership with Hatfield Township. We have some sewer projects going on, not the utility replacement project, but that's replacing inlets, manholes, that, those type of expenses. And electric projects at $60,000, which is pole replacement, maintenance on our system. What this looks like as your impact to real estate taxes, Hatfield Borough was at 3.25 mills in 2024, so we jumped to 4.25 mills in 2025. That's a one-mill increase for Hatfield Borough. Again, 3.75 or four mills go to Hatfield Borough for real estate taxes and .25 of your mills go to the Hatfield Volunteer Fire Company to support their services to the borough. On the average assessed income, like house value in Hatfield Borough, it looks at $150 a year or $12.50 a month increase. That's based on the current assessment for Hatfield Borough, which if you know anything about assessments, the county is a little bit behind in raising the assessed value for homes. So that's something they're working on. And impact to electric rates, we did have an electric rate increase due to the PJM auction that I will talk about in a few slides. So the average electric house will go up roughly $27 per month if you are all-electric. An average electric apartment, around $1,250 a month. And the average electric commercial property, between 30 and 175. If you're a commercial property owner, I encourage you to reach out to David Weiss in the Utility Billing Department. We have multiple categories for commercial billing, demand meters, different things. So it really depends on how your property is billed, the increase that you will see in your electric bill. Talking about borrowing and debt service, Hatfield Borough has a few series notes out for some projects that we have completed in the past. The first is a 2020 Series Note, and that was for this building that we're currently in today. We have principal payment on that this year coming up in May for roughly $400,000. We have some interest payment of $30,000. So our total payment for the 2020 Series Note is a little over $430,000. We have a 2021 Series Notes A and B, short term and long term. We had borrowed that money for the East Lincoln Avenue Bridge Project that was completed for a vehicle purchase and also for our MTF grant, which is crosswalks that are going to be installed possibly as early as the end of 2025. More looking into 2026 at the intersections of Townmenson Avenue and West Broad Street. So right where Vinnie's Pizza is, crosswalk across there to like, from Hatfield Borough Townmenson Avenue to Hatfield Township Townmenson Avenue, a big mast arm crosswalk with flashers, as well as updating the crosswalk out front here at Mom's Water Ice to be the same mast arm flashing. So this money is already set aside to pay for that project. And once we get the grant reimbursement from the MTF, we'll pay off the rest of the short-term loan on that, and we'll take our debt payments down a little further. And in 2024, Hatfield Borrow borrowed a Series A and B note for the utility replacement project that we've just spoke about. We got the A note at 3.65% and the B note at an estimated 3.70%. That's a variable rate. What our idea is, is pretty much the same with 2021, is when we start getting that grant money back, we start paying off that short-term debt. So we're really only going to end up carrying probably like $1.8 million instead of $2.9 million long-term into the future for the borough. So as soon as we're getting that money back, the $300,000 we received, we've already paid the debt payment back. So we're kind of trying to get as much grant reimbursement as possible, as quick as possible when the project is ongoing and completed, so we can work on paying off that debt. And in September of this year, we will have paid off the rest. It's $99,000 of our AMI debt that we had taken on. We actually borrowed from ourselves. Didn't take this out at the bank, didn't get a note for it. We have some investment funds we took from to pay for the AMI electric system, and that will be paid off in September of this year. So if anybody's noticed or you've heard on the news, maybe looked at your own electric bill, why are my electric rates increasing? So capacity costs rose from $2.2 billion to $14.7 billion after the 2024 PJM auction. So what does that mean to us? So who is PJM? PJM is the Regional Transmission Organization, or as we talk about, the RTO, that coordinates the movement of electricity in parts of the Mid-Atlantic and the Midwest. And why is that important? So the days that it's really hot or the days that it's really cold, they have to provide enough electricity to keep your lights on. So that's the demand. That's like the word capacity. You're going to say it's when the days are hot and the days are cold, you, they have to provide enough for everybody to use their AC at full blast and their heat at full blast. So when this auction occurs, which had occurred in July of 2024, the capacity rates we used to pay, $28.92 a megawatt day for this capacity charge. You know, very minimal part of your electric bill. It was just something that was kind of like an add-on. It wasn't the cost of purchase power. It was just the capacity along, we have with, you know, we have energy transmission and capacity. Well, when this auction came, which we haven't had in three years, everybody was blown away when the cost of purchase capacity went from $28 to $296. So that is a significant increase. And what that means to Hatfield Borough is our cost to purchase power to keep the lights on at your homes went from $1.6 million to $2.2 million. And there's absolutely nothing that Hatfield Borough can do about it. There's absolutely nothing that PICO or PP&amp;L or any of the IOU utilities can do about it. It hits everybody. This is a federal regulation. This is a federal law. If you've seen some things that Governor Shapiro has been doing by trying to put a floor and like a cap on it, so we don't see these high numbers again. Unfortunately, the floor is higher than the cap ever was before. So it's a small-term solution for a very, very large problem. There are talks about that capacity again, the auction this summer. Capacity could rise, you know, from $14.7 billion to in $20-some billion. And there, again, there's nothing that we as a utility provider can do. It's federally regulated. PJM kind of has control of it all. We are working really hard, Borough Council Budget Finance and Labor, of taking a look at, you know, our cost of purchase power. Is there ways we can purchase capacity or do some improvements on the side? We installed the Behind the Meter Generator, which is really good. So when its peak shaving is happening and it's really hot, we can kind of run this generator to pull us a little bit off the grid and try to save some money. But that all takes all the residents also helping pulling the money up, pulling us off the grid, like not using your air conditioners as much or keeping your heat lower in the wintertime. So, you know, it's just something that we're fighting through, we're working through. We're working with, you know, federal representatives, and we had meetings with FERC and in Washington DC. So we're going to battle for you, but it's also impacting PP&amp;L and PICO and those big electric cooperatives as well. So it's not just the borough pushing it on you. Hatfield Borough Council did decide to do a rate increase to try to mitigate some of these costs. But Hatfield Borough also decided that we were not going to put it all on the residents, and we are actually taking some money from investments to cover the cost because we didn't, Borough Council didn't think it was fair to just throw this all on the residents and make the residents split the bill as maybe an IOU or something would have the ability to do. So what that kind of looks like for our budget, so Hatfield Borough's capacity charges in 2024 was $4.59 a megawatt hour. What we look at in 2025 is $16.47 a megawatt hour. That's the significant jump. And that's why we're at, you know, $2.2 million to purchase electricity now from the 1.6 that we were at in 2024. So we actually created a section of our website that has all this information. We'll keep you up to date. There's another auction this summer. We're really hoping that it doesn't double as they're kind of predicting it's going to be. And maybe we can get some type of cap as Governor Shapiro had suggested and we put into law. So if you check out the electric portion of our website, there's some good information and some things that, you know, if you're out, you can do to help, you know, cut down on the usage for Hatfield Borough, which ultimately would be cost savings to the residents. So some ordinance updates that Hatfield Borough enacted probably towards the end of 2024. I'll talk a little bit about the rental inspection program and recycling. So Hatfield Borough enacted ordinance 557, which is the rental inspection program. This ordinance is really looking at keeping those who choose to rent out their buildings that they own to keep them maintained to just like a higher standard, a higher level. We currently have a fire safety inspection program in the borough where we go in and we check rental properties, commercial properties, industrial properties, and make sure they're up to the standards for fire safety. This upsets standard a little bit more for those who choose to rent out their properties in Hatfield Borough. What they're now going to be inspecting is the exterior of our properties, which is property maintenance code. They're going to be inspecting electrical inside, including fire protection and fire safety, which they did before, plumbing and heating, looking at the common spaces in these multi-unit apartment complexes, and then the general property maintenance. So every year, if you rent in Hatfield Borough, you have to, not the renter, the owner, would have to pay an annual fee of $65 like to register in Hatfield Borough, and then it's $85 a unit. And then you get your first annual inspection, and then you need to be inspected every three years if your tenants do not change. If your tenants change, it's at every time your tenant changes, your property then gets inspected by these standards. So we're just really trying to, you know, keep everybody, health, safety and welfare is always the number one concern of Borough Council. And this is just kind of a way that we can also field those calls that have been coming in of some homeowners and properties for people that were having some issues. Now this gives us the right to hold people to a little bit higher standard than has been in the past. So in late 2024, Hatfield Borough also updated ordinance number 555, which is the Municipal Waste Collection and Recycling. This was in partnership or in coordination with the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission, which our mayor serves on. We are one of 11 municipalities in the area that serve on a recycle, like a joint recycling commission. We apply for grants through them. We get funding back through them. So if you didn't know, recycling is super important. The more you recycle, the more money Hatfield Borough gets. So most of those in the audience are single-family residential establishments. So just noting that if you are a single-family home, you are required by law or by ordinance to recycle aluminum cans, bi-metal containers, paper, plastic containers and leaf waste, which Hatfield Borough provides you in October, November. In the beginning of December, we pick up leaf bags. So just to wrap up, I'd like to talk about communication and events and some things that are going on in the borough. So everyone should be receiving our, you know, bi-annually newsletter. Comes out in the spring. It comes out in the fall. Really good articles, really good information. If you have social media, follow us on Facebook or Twitter. We do have a YouTube channel. All Borough Council meetings are live streamed and they are recorded and put on the YouTube channel. So I encourage you to watch them and submit questions if you have any. If you are not signed up for ReadyMonco, I really encourage you to sign up for ReadyMonco. ReadyMonco is the app that Hatfield Borough uses that can directly call you, text you or email you with any emergency that's going on in Hatfield Borough. I'm going to knock on wood, it's really helpful on power outages. So if we have a power outage in Hatfield Borough, and you, thank you, and you do not have social media or you don't have access to social media, you will get a direct text message from Hatfield Borough to let you know where the outage is, when we expect power to be back on, any updates that are happening, crews are on site. So we use that frequently, same with road closures. There's been a lot of traffic going on on West Broad, East Broad and North Main Street. We frequently put out ReadyMonco alerts to let people know about traffic in the area. It's just an easy way for people that don't have access to social media to get a direct text or phone call. You just go to readymonco.org and choose Hatfield Borough and sign up. If you don't know, you can get your electric and sewer bill by email. It's very convenient. Don't have to worry about it being lost in the mail. So if that's something you're interested in, you can talk to David at the front desk. He'd be happy to sign you up. Mayor Gerard spoke about this briefly. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. I know some of you were in attendance. If you haven't already, I really encourage you to fill out the community survey. So there, some are available on the back table. It's a postcard. You can scan with a QR code. You can take a hard copy and drop it back off at the office. We're really going to take what residents say into consideration when we plan for our future. What is Hatfield Borough going to look like in 20 years? What is Hatfield Borough going to look like in 40 years? What kind of housing do you want to see? Are you interested in development? Are you interested in revitalizing the downtown commercial space? Do you want us to focus on parks and trails? What do you want this community to look like? It's important for Borough Council and the mayor to understand that when we're, you know, talking about, you know, spending money or budgeting for things or making park improvements, we want to do what's best for you. And the way to let your voice be heard is to fill out the community survey. Some of our events in 2025, this shows highlights, and Lindsay does an awesome job of putting all this together. So if you're around and in the area, please stop out at some of our events. Also want to highlight on, that's not on here, May 31st, Hatfield Borough has partnered with Hatfield Township, and we have a Hatfield 250 Committee. So in 2026, we'll be celebrating 250 Years of America. And Hatfield Borough and Hatfield Township have partnered with the 250 Committee. We're having events all the way through, starting in May of this year, all the way through 2026. So if you're interested, there are some brochures on the back table that talk about that committee and talk about the events that we're having on May 31st. It's the Living History Day with live reenactments, all kind of blacksmiths, all kind of people that are coming to School Row Park. So it's 10 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and I said the information is on the back table. And I wouldn't be impressed if I did not highlight the awesome county, state and federal officials that you have that are working hard for you. So if you have questions that, you know, Hatfield Borough can't answer or you need somebody else, like please don't hesitate to reach out to your county commissioners or your state representatives or state senators or your congressman. Even Judge Levine, great, great resources. They work really hard for their area. So don't be hesitant to reach out to them. And that's all for my section. If there's an open discussion, if you have any questions for me, for any council members or mayor that are here about stuff that I talked about with the budget or any questions in general. And a note to say the date, we'll do something very similar as we did last year. We'll have a full budget presentation in November, where we present our 2026 budget. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field those. Okay, I guess you guys want to talk about, oh, I thought you wanted to talk about.
Electricity. Did you have a sense why? Did you have a sense what was the, what caused the increase on PJM? Was that, I mean, the more requests, what was such a high increase like that?
Sure, so the main driver behind the increase was data centers coming online. The big, you know, I hate to say, if you know Three Mile Island or the nuclear plant that's in like Limerick, that area. um that's coming online specifically just for like data centers. So there's just not enough capacity to bring all the data centers online. Um also, there hasn't been an auction in three years. So a couple of people had said that they might have been trying to do play a little catch-up. They haven't been doing as well as they should have been, keeping things on track. But um the big driving force was the the data centers and just the technology, the AI, all of that stuff coming online, and the bridge is not being able to handle it.
I was on the Borough Council, in the planning commission, when they subdivided the the property from the Olinbox Farm.
Okay, yeah.
You know, we, we leaned very heavily on the representative from Montgomery County who helped us set it all up, the engineers. But as the years has passed now, I I look over there, there's not enough parking over there.
Parking, yes.
Oh, is, can the borough do anything about that?
So um we hear it all the time about parking. I know one adjustment that was made, which isn't gonna fix the issue in the Heather Meadows community today, but it was like looking at parking moving forward for developments like Bennett's Court that came up. Uh Borough Council passed, and I I did not work here at the time, but amended their ordinance where a parking space can no longer be counted as a garage. So in the Heather Meadows community, if you need to have, you know, three parking spaces for your home, your garage counts as one. So now in like a Bennett's Court area, your garage doesn't count as a parking space. So you would have to allow that for your driveway or overflow parking in a neighborhood. Um but I don't have any immediate answers for how can I fix the problem at Heather Meadows? But I know that the committee has talked about it. It's a great topic that we can add to the strategic planning. And uh we have a strategic planning meeting in September where all the committees on council uh come together and talk about public safety, public works, property and equipment. And is there something that we can do? I know there are people parking on Tomentson Avenue that live in Heather Meadows community. I know they're filling up Edgewood. I know that overflow parking is is an issue. I I I'm aware that, I think council is aware of it. Um the only thing we've changed from that is kind of amending the ordinance to require more parking for future developments. But I know that it doesn't fix the problem at that current development.
So you're telling me somebody is working on that?
So we have talked about it. I don't, I don't have a solution. I don't know that there is a solution right now that we've come up with. Um but there have been plenty of uh residents that have discussed or expressed concern about parking issues in Heather Meadows. And those around Heather Meadows who live on, say, Tomentson or Edgewood of the overflow parking that has come out to their, in the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, public streets are public parking, so it's really hard to regulate and say that, hey, just because you live in Heather Meadows, doesn't, you can't park on Tomentson Avenue because public parking is public parking.
I'm not complaining.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just.
I wonder if anything could be done to give them more parking.
And it's like I wish behind Brooks, you know, that big field, it could be parking.
Right, yes.
Buy that from Brooks, you know?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's their like open space, or if there was open space available at the park now, I mean, there's, there's not. I don't think the borough wants to give up open space for recreational to make parking. But I I mean, these are conversations council has to have. They're conversations that will probably happen tonight when we talk about the options for the pond. I'm not, you know.
Drive into the uh development there, the parks on the right.
Correct, yes.
And there's an open wooded area on the left.
Oh, at the corner of uh Tomentson Avenue and Edgewood.
That could be a place to put the overflow party.
I think we talked about pipes and things, stuff that was there and that reason that it couldn't be developed. But it's not that we can't look at it. I'm, I'm Borough Council and the mayor here, and I'm sure that they will look at all options, you know.
And then on Tomentson Avenue, if you're, if you're parked at one of the homes there. But I live in Heather Meadows.
Okay.
My parents live on Tomentson Avenue. So when I go to visit them and I try to back out of their driveway, I can't see, and it's very unsafe.
Yeah.
If all these cars are lining the road, the angle that that you try to look. And I have, I have great video cameras on my vehicle and everything. It's still, you can't see, it's scary.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm so worried that people that live on Tomentson Avenue are gonna get in accidents with the, and I don't, it just seems like there's an increase lately. I don't know if it's because the people that lived at Heather Meadows, their kids are growing up and becoming teenagers and getting cars and.
I think that the, the total number of cars per household has definitely increased. I know everybody, when everybody comes and builds a development, they say there's an average of one and a half, two cars per household. Every developer that will come in here will tell you that, we've all heard it. In reality, it's probably four cars per household. I mean, that's just what it is. That's the reality of kids growing up. I mean, I live in a, I have a family of four. I'm sure when my kids drive, they're both gonna have a car. Now we have two cars or we've just got three, we're gonna have five, you know, in my, in my house. I have a single-family home in the borough. So where are we gonna park, on the street? Yeah, yeah, so I hear your concerns, yeah.
Being able to see, making sure, you know, instead of two cars parked in front of the house, maybe just one car parked in front of the house on Tomentson. It's just so you can see, there's no gaps to see as you look back.
Yeah, I would say we probably have to reach out to Anton, our um, our engineer for traffic. I know we have done some improvements at the end when we would call that Little Broad Street behind Vinnie's. Um we had uh the homeowner at the corner there. We had them trim their tree a little bit so we could have a sight line underneath there. Um maybe back a little bit farther. We're only by law allowed to paint yellow so far from a stop sign or an intersection. We have to follow the walls. Um I don't know how we can regulate parking on a public street when it's public and everybody can park there. But I know that will be a conversation with the police department, and it'll be a conversation at council. And I think we can, besides fixing what we did for future development, looking if there's anything we can do to alleviate the issue with a current development.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are we gonna talk about the pond anyway?
Yeah, right now. But I'm just stalling, you know, can you tell they're nervous about it? So I'm just happy to be up here. Mr. Arman.
Sorry if I missed it.
No, it's okay.
Any update on the uh train station activity, Mrs. Anderson?
Uh Borough Council is currently um, I would say like in negotiations with a, with, with a tenant. We're trying to work out lease numbers, um but still keeping that open if it doesn't work out with uh this tenant, who is um kind of interested in, I would say, kind of like a, I don't wanna say like a, a coffee type of like restaurant area shop. Um but we're still entertaining ideas. Uh we were gonna be in a contract with a brewery, but that did not, that kind of fell through. So now we have it really open for anyone who's interested, and we've had a couple of people come. And we're just really kind of trying to work out the numbers. You're welcome. Question online.
Hey, can we assign permits and allow residents to park in the park? There are little parking spaces that go empty.
So currently by now ordinance, there's no parking uh dusk till dawn in Hatfield Borough parks. So that's why the park at Heritage Park stays empty all evening. Um that is something that we can talk to Borough Council if they are willing to uh adjust that ordinance. So I will write that down as well as kind of, kind of goes hand in hand with the Tomentson Avenue parking. So there's gonna be conversations at, for Borough Council. Anything else? I think it's the pond, guys, all right.
No. All right, just kidding, we canceled this part of the town hall, so everybody can go home. Um so I'm gonna start it off just a little bit with a little past history and a little infrastructure of the actual pond, and then I'm gonna kick it off to our borough engineer, Mr. Camber. Um so this is some aerial shots of the pond through the years. Uh thank you to the Hatfield History Museum for some of these great aerial shots, the top two specifically. And I'm probably gonna mess something up here. Oh, there it is. If anybody can see this very faint red line, 1960, right Larry? And then I believe this one was 1993. And there's the pond there, and this one's a little harder to see, but I believe I'm on the pond there. Sorry for the shaking hand. These two down here, I don't know the exact date, but I'm gonna say early 2000s, probably 2002, 2003, somewhere in that area when the Heather Meadows community was being built. Um and then these two are from this past fall, summer slash fall of this past year, 2024. So you can see, you know, just how the entire area has changed over the years, specifically the pond itself. So this, these are a couple of pictures of, I'll say, some better-looking images of the pond and some not-so-better images. 2024, the fall, it was virtually dried up. There was almost no standing water, very, very little at all. Right now, if you go out there, it looks fantastic. I'm not gonna lie, it looks like a great pond. Um the bottom here is a nice little uh graph that Manager Snyder did of the 2020 fall rainfall by month. And you could see in September and October how dry it was. I mean, October, there's just nothing. So was that a big contributing factor to the pond being in that state of the fall of 2024? Maybe, maybe not. We're not sure, that's still information we're trying to gather. Um we have had substantial rainfall. Um not counting, I believe what we got today, we're at almost 12 inches so far this year, which is a pretty decent amount of rain so far for the spring. So here's a little map I did. Um I'm no engineer, and I never claimed to be. Thank you, Chad. Uh this is what I call my technical drawings of the infrastructure of the pipes that we're aware of around the pond. So this lower line here is a 48-inch uh concrete pipe that goes from the inlet at the bottom of Larkspur cul-de-sac, comes all the way over to my little lovely point there and angles over to the outflow that goes into the retention basin. Not only does that pipe collect just the stormwater from Rain Tree and Larkspur, it also goes out into the township and goes over towards Coffe Road, collects a lot of stormwater from that area as well. That was something that was existing prior to the community being built that was retrofitted and kind of revamped for the expansion of the area. There is a, you, if you don't cut the grass there every week like we do, you would never even see it. But there's a little tiny yard drain on the backside of the trail down here with an eight-inch PVC pipe that drains into the pond. The overflow for the pond, so for instance, if the water of the pond gets to a certain height and you don't want it to get too high, it hits an overflow pipe, runs down that pipe, runs into the retention basin that's in through the, the block wall that's, I kind of refer to as the dam wall. Um it's right here across under the trail and comes into the retention basin here. And then there's two other pipes that come, once again, kind of directed towards the retention basin. They both outflow over in this general area where the tip of the V is, and they both collect two different storm sewer inlets, uh one by the potlot and one on the other side of the trail. So that is the infrastructure that we're aware of, of where different pipes are. I'm obviously not getting into all the pipes that are on Larkspur because they all end up going to this drain down here in the cul-de-sac. Yes, sir.
And also, I guess, you know, where I guess that drain comes out of, back where the um mailbox is, you know, the little part. There's also someone online picks up the spring because that one picture you showed when it was completely dried, there's still water flowing through the extension box. So you know, there's a spring in there, somewhere coming out of that, um, I guess it's the. Well, coming out of the, coming out of that, that, yeah, the dam from underneath.
So um I don't know that for a fact. I've always been told if, you can't see it now, but in the past, there's been a square structure right in this area. I've always been told from past people that that was the natural spring that fed the pond. I, it's just hearsay, that we've never had any proof that proves that. I can't say that for sure, so I.
Maybe just like the pond's fully dry with zero rain, the water's still flowing through the pipe into the retention pond. Into the retention basin.
This one down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that pipe, to my knowledge, once again, I, I can't speak, I've never crawled down that pipe and I don't plan to. But to my knowledge, that just does, the elevation of that pipe is far lower than the elevation of the pond. So to my knowledge, that pipe just does this line here.
And similar lines pick up.
I mean, I, I've talked to our engineer about this. I would love to try to do some kind of calculation on a flow study of the water that goes into this inlet and the water that leaves this outflow structure to compare the differences. I think that would give us a lot of information. I'm just not that smart, I'm not gonna lie.
I walked by there. I live across the street from the pond, on Tomentson Avenue. And I could see the stream at, where the overflow for the pond is. It's just, water's just rushing through, and on the other side, we're not even up to the spillover with the, the overflow.
Right.
I thought if you could direct some of that water into the pond and get that water.
That's something that we have discussed, and the issue is all the storm sewer in the entire neighborhood is lower than what the elevation of the pond is.
Oh.
It was all, it was all built, I think the reason it was built that way was because this existing pipe was already there. So it all had to flow into that pipe.
Years ago, maybe 49, my neighbor cut a five-inch bass out of that pond.
Let's go fishing there all the time.
My daughter, she used to go over there fishing with her, with her grandfather all the time. Now, your plants don't even live in that.
I'm not gonna lie, I went fishing there as a kid. I, I spent my whole life in this town. I used to ride my bike to this pond and go fishing when Olinbox had it.
Yes. The pond follows pretty much the out, the, 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 the shape of the previous pond before all the developments were built. That, that pond existed before.
Yes.
With that particular shape and that particular elevation. So nothing has changed as far as location, elevation to the way it was in the farm that was there before. So, and that pond, all those years was fed had water. And with, I mean, we know the, the, the rains cycle, not the same, but never, I mean, I mean, we don't know if it went dry or not. I, I haven't been living in the area for that many years. But it's clear that there's a different pattern now that we have, that we've seen with the, the ability for that pond to dry. So I'm, I'm kind of curious to know what would have made that difference so that now that pond that seemed to have maybe stayed as a pond for that farm all those years, now is not able to have water feeding into it. Because I mean, the pond is that, it's water feeding into it and maintaining a certain level, not just by rain, whatever, whatever the water comes from, to maintain its existence by structure, the edges, and, and having its own living system. That's, that's what I'm very curious to know and I hope to hear the rest of their presentation.
You're pretty much saying everything I was gonna say.
That's the same question we've been asking for a while.
The 48-inch pipe, what was that for them?
That was existing. It was, uh according to the drawings for the Heather Meadows community, it was remaining. It was supposed to be just routed.
Was that put in there when they did the uh overflow, that retention area?
So I'll step in here.
Um I'll just hand it over to Chad.
Uh, no, just tell me, I'll just move this way.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just start with this, um let me just, let me start with saying, um Mayor Gerard kind of stole my opening statement. This is meant to be a back and forth, and it is already, but I have a script and I'm gonna stick to it here. Um by no means or is anything I say us dictating what's gonna happen, us saying that, you know, this is the way it's gonna be. It's meant to be a true town hall, which it currently is. We want to hear your feedback as much as you hear ours. So just keep this going the way it is. Um it's great feedback and back and forth and, and just want to give you a little bit of history based on a, a number of documents that I've seen. The first one actually dates back prior to the first uh aerial that Steve showed you. I, I received something from Larry Stevens, I believe, through the Historical Society, which I believe dated back to the 1920s. And a, a lot of the roads weren't even in place at the time. The, you know, the change in West Broad Street wasn't done. Uh it was a farm horse back then, and this pond didn't exist, at least based on, you know, it's grainy, but based on everything we can tell, this pond didn't exist back then, which tells us this is a man-made pond. That pipe that we're talking about, um it's not this one, but there's another pipe that used to be there. That wasn't there either. It was, you know, a creek bed stream, what have you. And of course, it ultimately flowed down to the, the creek downstream. At some point in time, the farmer built this pond, probably for the livestock would be my guess. Uh it didn't look exactly like this, but it looked very similar. And when the Heather Meadows development was uh developed, there was an existing, I believe, a 48-inch pipe that ran actually close to this edge of the pond. Based on those plans, and I don't have any. Based on those plans, and I don't have any, you know, as-built documentation, but based on those plans, that pipe was intended to be filled in. And this other pipe was, was in place, or put in place at that time. So historically, this was always a stream of some sort. At some point in time, there was a pipe that was installed, essentially going from here to the wetlands area downstream. And this is essentially just a different pipe that was put in place to pick up the development, everything upstream from, from the township, uh, and essentially divert water. Sorry, I did this last time too. Uh, dive ball, uh, keep diverting water around this pond. We have no belief whatsoever that there's a direct connection between this pipe to the pond in one way or the other. Water doesn't go from the pond into the pipe or from the pipe into the pond. It's completely a bypass. So that's a little bit of history of what we know. Uh, I, I've heard some great points, um, and quite frankly, we're still in the investigative stage right now. We're not entirely sure what feeds this pond. If we knew, we would know why it dried up and we would have, you know, some more information on what it takes to keep the, the pond wet. The, all the options I'm gonna present here in a few minutes, all of them are dictated upon us finding that, that source of water. Where's the water coming from? Why did it stop coming in, you know, last year? Where's it going? If it's, if it's drying up, it's going somewhere clearly. So let me get into a couple of different options that we looked into. Again, these are just concepts that, you know, we, we came up with three. Want you to know that we've heard, you know, the residents, we've thought about it, we've begun investigations and some concepts that we've come up with that could potentially be options. Very, very rough cost estimates, because there's a lot of information that we still need to gather. Uh, but the first one is just to fill it in, okay? These are no particular order by any means. So just fill it in. That's one of the options certainly. Hog out the material that's in there, identify what was keeping it wet, because certainly if there was something that was keeping it wet, we don't want to fill it in. That was saturated the ground and potentially caused more issues. Uh, if that were the case. Uh, we're estimating a hundred thousand dollars, just a ballpark number. Uh, the pros to this option are it would be very low maintenance. It would be just like any other park that's in the township, primarily just smelling of the lawn by public works. Uh, we think there's a moderate chance for funding. Um, all of these options may or not uh be eligible for funding depending on what, what we said would ultimately be there. If there's some sort of amenities that maybe fall into a parks grant, we could potentially look at that. Um, and of course, you know, we would add additional open space for the borough. Boroughs always looking for places to have open space. If it were to be filled in relatively flat with a lawn area, it could be active open space as opposed to passive open space that you can't really use, but it would never be built on. Some of the cons to this are possible D E P assessment, which means they may have regulatory, regulatory oversight over not only how this is filled in, but how it's ultimately maintained in the future. Um, you know, it's not always an easy thing to work with D E P's oversight. Um, obviously, there would be an impact on the wildlife. I've heard, you know, there's potentially snapping turtles in there. Obviously, no fish when it's dry, but at times there may be fish. There have been fish. Uh, and of course, all the other, you know, maybe uh animals that you may not see, but certainly there's wildlife in there. And maybe what maybe you're all concerned about the most is the, the also aesthetic appeal of the pond. Um, those of you who moved in Heather Meadows, you've always seen a pond there. You may have moved in there because there was a pond there. Uh, we understand that. And again, we're not saying this is gonna happen, but this is pros and cons of, of this one particular option. Option two that we looked at were to be, uh, essentially replace the pond, find out what the problem is and rebuild it. Uh, we would have to drain it, hog it out, identify the source of the water. Again, find out where the water went when it dried up and do something to make sure that that doesn't happen again, whether it's some sort of liner um, or, or something else, clay, uh, material that could potentially be put in there. Some option that would keep water in there. If there's a leak somewhere, obviously, we'd have to identify that as well. Uh, the pros to this option would be the obvious benefit to the, the environment. Uh, the aesthetic appeal, which again, I believe is probably your most concern. Uh, again, moderate chance for funding. If we were able to, you know, install an environmentally friendly pond, uh, there's potentially grant money available for that. And depending on how this pond were to be designed and, and ultimately developed, there could be some sort of recreation activity that could be built into it. The cons are the high maintenance. This pond is, is a mess to, to maintain. Steve can certainly attest to that. Uh, you have the geese in there that are a, a mess for any pond. Um, that certainly creates scum that impacts the, the ability for fish and other aquatic lives that live in that pond because they don't have the oxygen that they need. Uh, because the, the scum blocks the light that could get down to the bottom and it creates more of a muck at the bottom. Uh, the borough would certainly have to look at liability, you know, any kind of wet area, pond area is a potential liability that we would have to look into. Uh, the water fowl or the birds that it attracts, again, ma- mainly geese that cause the issue with maintaining the pond. And, and again, if it's fed by a, a natural spring, something happened that at some point, we have to find out, is that a sustainable spring to keep this uh full of water long-term? And then third option would be to do some sort of in-between of those two. Would be to turn it into a naturalized wetland, um, where it's not always full of water. There could be pockets of water. There could be wetlands plantings or wetland meadow. Um, there's a number of different seed mixes that could potentially be planted in there. This is just, you know, a, a, a stock photo offline. It's actually, I believe, from the Ernst, if you've ever heard, the Ernst um seed mix. They, they do a lot of wetland seed mixes. That's just a photo, I believe, from their website. Um, it doesn't have to look like that. It could look like any number of, of things. Uh, we also consider potentially making an educational, educational uh feature where you could put some sort of trail. This is showing more of a boardwalk trail, but again, it could be wood, it could be gravel, it could be stone, i- i- it could be grass, it could be any number of things, but potentially uh, we believe that would have the highest potential for grant funding. Um, you know, the, the environmental groups like the educational aspect. Uh, you put up some signs and say, in this corridor, this particular area, these are the, the types of plants you see. This is what they're good for. They attract butterflies, birds, what have you. Um, just potential options for that. Moderate maintenance, uh, really would be just maintaining any invasive uh vegetation that may get in there. Maybe some, some melting around the outskirts of it, or if there's a trail, maintaining the trail, if that's what you ultimately do. And again, it will be in another source of, of open space. In this case, it would be passive uh open space as opposed to recreation. With the exception of the trail area, of course, that's not meant for, uh, you know, playing ball, maybe for jogging or walking, you know, what have you. Uh, the cons are, we anticipate this would be the highest cost, uh, because there would be a substantial amount of work that would be required to do this. Um, there may, may not be funding, so of course, the, the ultimate cost depends on whether there is funding or not. And again, uh, potential D E P assessment, um, both during the construction and long-term. There could be a potential for D E P to have some sort of involvement or oversight in, in this as well. So I'm interested in hearing everybody's feedback on these three different options, or like frankly, if you have, or fifth, sixth, um, just let us know your thoughts.
I have, I have a quick question for you, Chad. I'm not familiar with the full topography of the area there. But is there a possibility, we've had that big development that's been working on for two years with Del Webb, right up there on the other side of the, uh, forty-foot road? Um, is there a possibility, because of that development and the overlay with new streets, driveways and everything in there, that that's affecting the water flow that's coming from that area to the pond? It may be affecting what's feeding that pond for the water?
Yeah, that's a great question, and we've certainly considered that. Uh, I would say it's unlikely, going back to my original and Steve's original concept of that pipe has always been there, and that pipe has always bypassed this pond. So the water that's coming out of that development never got into this pond to our knowledge, and it still doesn't. Uh, if anything, that development most likely would have raised the ground table, groundwater table, which probably would have pushed more water into the pond if, if nothing else. So while I can't definitively say no it didn't, I, I think the, it's unlikely that it did. Questions, feedback? Well, let me, let me just poll the group here. Out of the three options I discussed, which one is most appealing to this group? Number two, keeping the pond.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, sure.
I do appreciate all the options. I, I thought I was gonna come here and you were just gonna say we're just filling it in. So I, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. Um, and I agree, I'm, I look out at the pond. So, and I'm the original oversight, always been there, so changes hard for me, obviously.
Right.
Um, but during the year, it was all dried up. So, yeah, it was, it was ugly. Um, and now it's beautiful, but, um, yeah, two and three, I think are I mean, are really good options.
Yeah.
I know.
And, and again, it could be a hybrid potentially of two and three.
Yeah.
Um, just automatically depending on, one, funding, um, and two, what we find when we do our additional investigation, is it a sustainable, you know, spring that could be there full-time? With the wetlands, I'll call it wetlands meadow, wetlands mix. Um, it primarily likes wet areas, but it can also survive in short periods of dry weather or dry periods, so um, that's where the hybrid may be more applicable. It doesn't mean we completely eliminate the pond, but maybe we kind of isolate certain pockets or areas of a pond.
You were right, I heard that they were gonna fly it over and put in the pickleball court. So I'm really happy that you're not suggesting that.
Don't listen to rumors. You come here for the actual source.
I, I'll tell you, I've never heard that, so.
Actually, more than I'm serious, I come back to like, the pictures you have them completely dry, it was like October, November of last year. So at that point, then we were, because I usually hear dogs walking on the Del Basin, there's, there's still water flowing out of them pipes. There's a pack of spring in there somewhere. I think I should have a park cleaned up and my wife fell and got like wet, so there's still, there's still water in there somewhere. And I think it's, it's one, at one point, I should have talked to Jamie about it, but we had, this was a company that does all your lateral, lateral inspections of all sewer. Just have them look, take a look, I mean, if they could look down that, that pipe, say, where's the water coming from?
And which pipe are you talking about? The large forty-two inch pipe or forty-eight inch?
He's gonna say.
Um, actually, you have, you bring it for all this.
It's the general area where the pipe comes out into the wetlands area.
Down here. The overflow is here, actually, there's, yeah, another pipe that comes here that kind of feeds in. No, I, I know it picks up all the storm water, but also, like I said, in October, November, when we had no rain for a month, there's still a steady flow of water coming out.
And you're saying that was a different pipe than this one?
But no, it's the same pipe, it's the type it is there.
Oh, yeah.
It picks up all, all the drain. I mean, right now, it's probably flowing quite well, but October, November, we had like no rain for a month. There was still water coming out of it.
Yes, I agree. Yes, I go over there too.
So there's a spring in there somewhere. It's coming from somewhere. I guess that's the cave in the note.
Yeah.
Where, where is that spring coming from? So it had like a lateral inspection, maybe they could see any of their source of water.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, Mr. Moore, I've actually reached out to multiple companies that do televise single-on pipes, and the issue we're running into is finding a company that can televise such a large pipe. A lot of the.
Is it, okay, it's just the diameter?
The diameter, because when you send the camera through there, the camera has a light on it. And the larger the pipe, the more darkness the light has to compensate for, so a lot of these cameras that these companies have, they, they can't do, like, they could run their camera through a forty-eight inch pipe. They're, you're just not gonna see anything. So that's why I was saying I would like to, I would like to figure out a way, and it's something that Chad and I can work together to. There's got, there's, there's a way. A flow study on the water coming into the inlet at the cul-de-sac and the water coming out. Is there a difference? Because we just rebuilt the inlet at the cul-de-sac, um, probably late fall of this past year. And in late fall, when we were having that dry spell, there was still water flowing through the inlet, which ultimately ends up into the wetland or retention basin.
Okay, so you can see when you rebuilt that?
Yes, so there, there was still water flowing in from, I'll say, the township side of the inlet. But I don't know, it, making numbers up, was it a hundred gallons a day coming into that inlet and two hundred gallons a day coming out of the outflow pipe? I don't know that. I don't have the intelligence to figure that out. I'm not saying there's not a way. I'm just saying I can't figure that out, but I'm sure somehow there's a way to do that. And that's something that I'm interested in trying to figure out, because that would prove a lot if we can actually televise the pipe. We could tell if there is more water coming out of the pipe than going into the pipe.
Because sometimes it's, I've seen necessarily studies where they test, not necessarily volume, which is where it came from, where, where like like underwater cave, it actually looks like a not a die or one end, it's like, okay, where is it coming from?
We, we have that ability, and I've done dye tests before. And when I drop a dye tablet into the inlet, it comes out of, into the retention base.
Yeah, it starts here, then it's here.
But that doesn't tell you if there is a spring somewhere that could be coming into that forty-eight inch pipe.
Yeah, it's just addition to.
In addition to that, it doesn't tell you that.
But if that was, if you didn't bypass the pond, it just fed that water into the pond, I, you'd think that would help it out a lot.
Yeah. Once again, the issue is that forty-eight inch concrete pipe is at a lower elevation than the actual pond, so ultimately, it would be great if we could just take runoff storm sewer water and put it right into the pond. In, in my opinion, that would pretty much solve everything, especially with that flow of that pipe. But because of the elevation difference, it's not gonna naturally flow into the pond.
Gravity doesn't go up.
No, gravity does not go up.
You would actually drain the pond through that pipe.
Yeah.
I, I, what happened to the sprayer in the middle?
The fountain.
Yeah.
Uh, that goes back to the maintenance issue there.
That, that leads into the maintenance, um, because of, I'll say because of, uh, the amount of what I'm calling muck at the bottom of the pond. Uh, if some people have found out, if you tried to walk out there, you'll actually sink head-deep into just almost like a quicksand-type muddy material. Uh, the pond, the fountain itself is set up to where there's a pump at the bottom. And there's a metal cage, like cone, that goes down on the bottom side and a circular flow on the top. Well, as the water level drops, that whole fountain drops and it drops into the muck. And it sucks up that muck into the fountain and burns up the pump. So we have spent thousands of dollars in the thirteen years that I've been here into new fountains. And we don't feel like it's responsible to put another one in until we can figure out what's going on with the pond. Um, I will say, I, I don't know if Jamie was gonna touch on this, but we did have, um, Monca- the Montgomery County come out and test the pond for mosquitoes. And they actually tested multiple locations and did not find any larva. So, and they, but now that's on their radar, they are gonna constantly check back with it, and if they do find it, it will be treated.
That's good enough.
So let's say we decide to keep the pond, what kind of repairs or maintenance will be done to get rid of that layer of muck?
It would be dredged out.
Dredged, okay.
Yeah, start with a new bottom.
I think, uh, to I, I.
Has that happened at all since they, um, put in Heather Meadows? No, I've, I've never seen.
That one out.
It'd be interesting to talk to some farmers that have these kinds of ponds. How do you maintain them? How do you keep the geese from causing all this muck on the bottom? You know, finding out from people that have had these kinds of ponds, how did our mother-in-law, Buck, manage it for so long?
Yeah.
I'm sure there were geese back then.
The two pictures on option two that we have, um, so we've been in contact. So the top picture is actually a stony creek pond in Lansdale Borough, so off of Hancock Street. So they have a very functioning pond that you can fish there. It's really nice. Uh, we've been in communications with them. How do they feed it? How's the water? There's like a creek that runs by there. And the one on the bottom is actually Christopher Dock. So, um, Steve has been out there in the last couple of weeks to look at the pond. Um, is there stuff that we could incorporate from Christopher Dock, working with somebody out there? You know, those have been two successful ponds just in, you know, you know, a couple of square miles of us. So how can we maybe mirror something? So we are working with Lansdale and we'll be, you know, trying, besides going out there, trying to see how Christopher Dock maintains theirs. Um, they seem to be two successful, you know, very good recreational ponds in the area. Um, so maybe we can get some tips from them, how it's fed, water, how they keep their fountains, how they keep the water fowl out, you know, those type of things, so. That's some, what things we're working on. Yeah.
I'm, I'm really happy to hear that.
Yeah, I was going to say option two, option three, I think, I, I like option two. The option three, I think, brings also more, uh, plans, so I, I, I mean, it's going to see on the, that you're in contact with areas where they have their pond and and, uh, with the naturalized wetland, the idea is to bring plants. And uh with the naturalized wetland, the idea is to bring plants that could help maintain the the. Um the 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 clean less or but sustain if I'm the fight, the the life of the of the pond, so. I don't know if there's any ideas from that option three that can be also included in option two, just to um. Make the maintenance of the pond easier.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned that, uh.
Grain cherry is, that's now basically become a natural.
Right.
There, there's so much wildlife in there, you know, big diversity of plants and animals and.
Yeah.
In a better world, you'd have the uh. The retention area where the pond is and the pond. Can you go to the. It had plain water.
Yeah.
Constantly built it.
Get backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there an option? I I love these options that you that you put to through, especially two and three, and I'm glad to see that we're not just gonna pay. One of the options is not just paving a neighborhood, right? That is that an option?
Not one that we presented.
I mean, you did mention about parking in Heather Meadows.
Cars might sink in.
That would be the most expensive option.
Yeah, a little bit, I don't think you're getting grant money. And and I did skip over one important factor is the the top one here, um. I don't know if you're familiar with the M S four program, but. Uh municipalities are required to maintain and monitor storm sewer system. But by storm sewer, it could be pipes, it could be roadside swales, whatever. Um it's a program run by D E P. And part of that is thermal impacts, which means if you have a standing body of water, the sun beats on it and heats it up, and that's not good. It's not good for the environment. Uh one of one of the main benefits to, I'll say what number three here is. You don't have that large standing body of water, you have these plants that soak up the water and then they, what they call evacotranspirate, it's big work. They soak it up and then ultimately it disperses into the into the air, through evaporation. So that is another uh benefit, it'll provide some sort of, let's say, clean water aspect to the. The diverse M S four program as well, uh which is always a help.
The way I feel and listening to everybody talking, could we remove option one from the table? Because I don't think anybody here would like that to be filled in, so is that possible to just. Remove it from the table and not even consider it?
It's fine with me.
I'm fine with that, I think option one was on there, we do all this investigation and there's no sustainability of water and moving. In the future, how do we sustain that, and that ends up costing the borough, I'm making this number. Two hundred thousand dollars plus sixty thousand dollars every year to do something. Then I think that was like, hey, over a ten year period, is it gonna be sub? Uh it won't be uh financially feasible for the borough to keep this option open. I think that's the only, honestly, only reason why option one was on there, I don't think, you know, anybody really wants to that to go away. So I think that's why, so if, I think that would be our very, as you said, absolute last resort, it's not even on the table. It's just like, hey, in the back pocket, if it came up and just became like, we could never afford to maintain it. I I don't know what that is, because we don't know about the water source, like if we find it and there's a water source and there's some, I think that solves a lot of problems.
I actually just put option one on there, so numbers two and three look better.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm I'm a I'm an outdoors enthusiast, I love the outdoors, I'm a big fisherman fisherman, so I love ponds. I just hate me if you will, I hate this pond. I don't think it's appealing, I don't think it's nice looking. I do enjoy ponds, I love fishing, I love, you know, just nature walk stuff like that. I would not be opposed to a pond at a park if it was just. Easier to, my big thing is easier to maintain. If it was easier to maintain for my department and for the taxpayers, because ultimately you're paying for the maintenance of the pond. I'm not opposed to the pond at all, but it has to be sustainable.
I'd be interested to see what Christopher Dock and Lansdale have to say. Because they obviously have a different setup that's maybe more successful.
And there's a really nice, if you're at, if you're in the Doylestown area, Stephen and I frequent it as well, there's a, it's called Castle Park in Doylestown. Um but I know that you think of that as upper Gwinnett, they have a very nice, I feel it's more of a combo, two and three together. It's a pond that you can walk around that's sustainable, but it has plants and education along the side. That's like, hey, you stop here and these plants do this for the environment, this does that, so it's kind of a combo of a two and three together. So I don't think that option's off the table, how you all talked about maybe putting some more plants, like a wetlands plant around the pond, maybe that would help sustain it in the future. Um so that's a good option, if you're ever in that area to check it out, it's a really nice pond, we've both been to to check out as part of this process, and because we have kids that like to go and play.
I think I think that's an excellent idea, I have a small koi pond in my yard. And I I I put plants in it, as many plants as I could put in, because that's the only thing that keeps the water clear.
Yeah.
Plants basically filter all the muck out of it.
Right, right.
Yeah, if you're gonna keep a healthy pond, you have to have plants, so a balance of. Two and three, I think it probably be the best option.
It it's a total balanced ecosystem.
Sure.
Yeah.
And there's a ton of foot traffic there, so I think that having interesting things for people to look at.
The borough would benefit a lot.
That's right.
I said, now, I know when your option was to maybe improve it, maybe actually doing a little bit of dredging. Um, you know, I can, we own some family farm out in Chesapeake County, we've done that, just come over ponds. Like I said, it's a little messy at first, but years down the road, it didn't actually improve it. Because instead of the pond being this deep, now I have a much. Deeper pond, and we actually used the muck to help build up the embankment around the pond. And then, you know, they seeded that, planted it, or what you have here, they'll maintain those embankments. Just an observation.
And I'm a firm believer that part of the issue is, I mean, I think a big issue is the actual muck on the bottom of the pond. Because it's it's creating.
We removed that.
Yeah, it's creating more of a a solid surface than than a water surface, right? So, you know, instead of having forty-eight inch deep of water. Uh you've got, you've got twelve inches, so how long does it take in the middle of August for twelve inches of water to reach ninety degrees? Are fish sustainable in ninety degree water? Are plants highly sustainable in ninety degree water? How fast is ninety degree water gonna evaporate? But reverse that, instead of twelve inches of water, forty-eight inches, you have a longer period of time that it can sustain ninety degrees without fish dying. Without evaporation. So I think that's a big problem with the current state of the pond is the thickness of the muck at the bottom. It's just, it's not creating enough depth for the actual water itself.
How deep does it have to be in order to have it be required to have a fence up? It's never had.
I think that would be a discussion we'd have to have with our insurance company.
Thank you, that's fair.
Yeah.
But there is a fence around.
There's a fence separating Larkspur and the basically the Heather Meadows community.
Right.
Uh from the pond itself on. I'll say two sides.
Right, yeah.
Uh but from the park itself to the pond, there is nothing.
There's no fence at Stony Creek or Dock.
No, there's not.
We did put a sign out, because our insurance said like, no swimming, fishing, or something like a sign. We did that for liability, and so we would, we would never wanna put a fence up there, I think that would separate the recreational activity from that. That connectivity from the park to the pond, but um our insurance did call out the way that it looked last year. Um as maybe unsafe, that people would think it was walkable and you could just go out there, so that's why we installed that that sign. Um or to keep out a pond.
And if anybody noticed, uh when we had the pond drained, I don't wanna say when we had drained, it's not like we did it. When the pond was at its ultra low level in, you know, October, uh we did put a temporary construction fence out there. That was more fear on our end, um we know about the amount of kids that are at this park. They look at that, they think, hey, I can walk right out across that, no, you cannot, and you will get stopped.
That's why I saw some footprints, some really muddy kids come out of it.
Yes, so we didn't want them to feel, we wanted to put something up there as an obstruction and, you know, they just ripped it down anyway. But we we just, we tried to put some, put forth some sort of effort to stop that from happening.
Thank you. Do you wanna close there, or we don't?
Yeah, no, I mean, sure. If there's no other questions about the pond, I think the direction we're gonna go, as Mayor Gerard said, we will, at your consensus tonight, focus on two and three. We do have a a strategic planning meeting in September, this will be a topic. Um as you know, we're gonna be moving into the budget scene it season sooner rather than later, this is all gonna take funding. So uh that will be a conversation with Borough Council and the committees, uh that normally starts late August and September. Um we will continue on our end to see if we can do televising, see if we can do more dye tests. Get some more research done, share with you, um if you have any suggestions, opinions, you see anything out there, it's just supposed to be an open conversation. Um, open dialogue of, you know, we want and council wants to do what the residents want, you know, we're we're all here to serve you. And we appreciate your opinions and coming out tonight, um if there's no more questions, uh thank you for coming out. And as always, uh we meet the first and the third Wednesday of every month, uh feel free to come to any council meetings, we want to hear what you have to say, don't be shy. So thanks and have a great evening.